There's so much room for activities.
Good evening. It's time to call our meeting to order. This evening, we do have Commissioner Legg, who is in Kentucky with his brother, who is ill, and Commissioner Marley, who is actually in a public hearing pertaining to his job in Hope County. Both are excused from the meeting, and both did give prior notice. Commissioner Marley may arrive if the public hearing there is over before our meeting is over. At this time, we have with us Reverend Tim Gord from Liberty Hospice, who is a Liberty Hospice chaplain, to lead us in our invocation, which will then be followed by the pledge of allegiance. If you will all, please rise.
Thank you, Mayor. And on behalf of the Ministerial Association, we'll say thanks to all of you for the support at our prayer, noontime prayer at First Baptist last week, and then the beautiful sunrise service, which was so great being by the lake again. Looking forward to that. And our next big event will be the Day of Prayer, which will be the first Thursday in May.
Thank you for all you did.
Thank you. Heavenly Father, as we come before you this night, we are thankful for your many blessings, for the beautiful weekend that we've had with so much activity and things going on, and the show of unity in this community. We ask blessings upon this group that is meeting tonight, our elected officials, who will be discussing some very important issues. We pray that you will help us, as we are reminded in Scripture that it is our duty to continually pray for them in their leadership positions. And we do give you honor and praise, and thank you for your many blessings and the freedom we can enjoy being here tonight. We give you thanks always. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. At this time, do we have any additions or deletions to our agenda?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. No, we're gonna keep it.
We get to keep it, yes. Thank you.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. At this time, we have official comments. So I'll start with Commissioner Skarola.
I have nothing today, Mayor, but it's good to see everyone here.
Mayor Pro Tim?
Likewise, nothing but good to see everyone here.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Like Minister Gord said earlier, we had a great Easter weekend, Good Friday services, great turnout. And your sunrise service yesterday was one of the largest drives we've seen in a long time, and the weather was beautiful.
Gorgeous.
So again, thank you all that showed up and came out to be part of that. And thanks to ministers of the community that continue to support our town. Thank you.
Ditto to that, and just know that we had not only a show of unity, but in both services, there were ten, twelve at one and ten at the other as far as ministers, active ministers, all denominations. And what was really exciting was that the churches that all participated down at First Baptist for the community service, and First Baptist provided lunch for everyone that was in attendance. And then the same thing after sunrise service, Highland Baptist Church had breakfast. And then, so what was happening in Hope Mills this weekend was not only a blessing, but it was truly a show of how our churches are unified. And so I so appreciate everything you do, and thank you for what we did this weekend, because it was great for our community, great for our citizens. Any other official comments? Alrighty. So next, we have proclamations, and I'll start with the first one, which is the proclamation of Earth Day. Whereas on April 22nd, 1970, 20 million Americans, 10% of the United States population at the time, took to the streets, college campuses, and hundreds of cities to protest environmental ignorance and demand a new way forward for our planet. The first Earth Day is created with launching the modern environmental movement and is now recognized as the planet's largest civic event. Whereas the theme for Earth Day 2022 is Invest in Our Planet. Scientists, non-governmental organizations, business, and governments worldwide now are looking at natural system processes and emerging green technologies to restore the world's ecosystems and forests, conserve and rebuild soils, improve farming practices, restore wildlife populations, and rid the world's oceans of plastics. Whereas the world waits for global political and business leaders to take decisive action to reduce carbon emissions. Natural processes, including reforestation and soil conservation, can store massive amounts of carbon while restoring biodiversity, clean water and air, and rebalancing ecological systems. Restoration is pragmatic and necessary to reduce climate change. Whereas the concerned citizens of the town of Hope Mills are dedicated to the protection and preservation of our environment, and on April 23rd, 2022, will participate in a spring cleanup event. Now therefore, I Jackie Warner, Mayor of the town of Hope Mills, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim April 22nd, 2022, as Earth Day in the town of Hope Mills, and urge all to use this time to celebrate our only planet and commit to building a sustainable, green economy. And I do encourage volunteers for the Saturday event. It is a countywide event, and you can go online on the Cumberland County site and register there, which will get you a free tee shirt and also a nice green bag to pick up trash in. Town of Hope Mills, North Carolina, proclamation for Older Americans Month. Whereas every May since 1963, the Administration for Community Living leads our nation's observance of Older Americans Month. And the theme for 2022 is Communities of Strength. Whereas Hope Mills is committed to strengthening our community by connecting with and supporting older adults, their families, and caregivers, and acknowledging their many valuable contributions to society. Whereas Hope Mills recognizes the importance of bringing together all generations and engaging in activities that promote physical, mental, and emotional well-being for the benefit of all. Whereas Hope Mills can enhance the lives of older Americans in our community by promoting home and community-based services that support independent living, involving older adults and community events and other activities, and providing opportunities for older adults to work, volunteer, learn, lead, and mentor. Now therefore, I Jackie Warner, Mayor, do hereby proclaim May 2022 to be Older Americans Month. I urge every resident to take time during this month to recognize older adults and the people who serve them as essential and valuable members of our community. And to take this one step further, we do have now a Sunshine Committee that is made up of everyone. The members are all 55 and older. They did have their first meeting, and what they'll be doing is trying to work within our town to come up with activities and build support for our senior citizens. Next, we have another special proclamation, and this is the message of Freedom to Be Kind. And it's one that we all can embrace, whereas people should stand up for their right and freedom to be kind. This freedom should ring in our homes, schools, and workplaces, anywhere in which people come together. And whereas the following acronym is helpful reminder to be kind. F, be friendly. Open the door or speak to someone who may be feeling down or doesn't have a friend. R, be real, not fake, or else your effort is useless. E, be equitable, include everyone, not just the people you like. The real challenge is showing kindness to those that may not be nice in return. E, do it every day, not just on your good days or when you feel like it. D, be deliberate in your acts of kindness, because to that one person, it matters. Now therefore, be it resolved that I Jackie Warner, Mayor of the town of Hope Mills, do hereby proclaim Saturday, May the 7th, as Kindness Day in the town of Hope Mills, and urge all citizens to join Ms. Jenna Grace Nance in promoting the freedom to be kind across all cultures, ages, and genders. This 13-year-old will actually be here at our May, first meeting in May, to do a presentation about this special day that she has organized, and it will have promoted by having a food giveaway, some special activities. But the idea is, even at this 13-years-old, she believes that it's in time and important that we start being kind to one another and build relationships, which means that we all work toward making us all one. So that's May, the 7th is the day, and there'll be more information to come. That, next we have, now after all, final proclamation. Next, we have Public Safety Building Project Update, and this will be presented by Mr. Scott Garner, our architect. So I'll turn the microphone over to you.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. I'm glad to be here with you to talk to you about the public safety building next door. As you can see, we are making progress. Following a lull during the COVID, height of the COVID in the early part of the year and late last year, we've kind of tried to restart the construction. And we have done that. It is going a little bit slower than we had hoped in restarting, but we're making good progress. The main thing we're doing right now is putting on the standing seam metal roof, which you can see out there, which is silver. It's silver so that it will reflect the heat. And that's an environmental concern that we took into account in the building. It's about 70%, 70% of them. We still have to do, complete the fire part and do the trim around the fascia and the edges, but it's coming along very well. On the interior, they have started painting some of the sheet rock walls. We're starting to put down the ceramic tile in the toilets and bathrooms. We will have that in the lobby, or have porcelain tile in the lobby as well, but that has not started yet. The next thing on the exterior will be, we will put on the colored metal panels on the building, and that's gonna change the appearance of it. On the fire side, we'll have red panels, like we showed, you know, in the renderings when we were getting the colors approved. And on the police side, they will be blue, so that you can, you know, place in fire. And it'll add quite a bit of color to the building, and it will change the appearance. Previously completed, structural steel, masonry, plumbing is about 80 to 85% complete. Mechanical is about 40, 45% complete. Electrical, about 70%. And we are, we're moving along. We're in pretty good shape. We do have one anticipated change, or changes, and they're very minor. We met with the new police chief, and he asked, he made a request, and changes in some cabinet work. We do not have that ready tonight, but we will bring that to you next month. It should not be a major item, but it's part of adjusting and fitting to the building. Seeing it in three dimensions, you can tell a lot more than you can looking at it on paper. So at this point, the building is about 70% complete. We're in budget, and we're on time. So with that, I open that to questions. Do you have any questions or comments?
Anybody have any questions?
No.
No questions?
Well, we look forward to moving forward, and pretty soon, we'll be talking about moving in.
Alright. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you for being here this evening too, and this bad weather. Next, we have a public hearing, and this is case ZNG-001-22. Initial zoning of .75 plus minus acres to R7.5 or more restrictive zoning property located at 4465 Calico Street. And I'll turn it over to Mr. McLaughlin.
Hello, Board. Madam Mayor, how you guys doing? This, I didn't even put this presentation together. This is just the initial zoning that's tied to the annexation of the town manager's property. It was annexed in officially in November of last year, and the board gave me authorization to pursue the R7.5, but they had to go to the planning board. It's coming back to us, but we had that transition between the county and the town. So that's why it was somewhat delayed in terms of why it's coming in now. But the only request to you now is just pretty much to initially zone the R7.5, to put the designation on the property, and that's basically it. This is, you know, when we typically talk about annexations, we're talking about the development of land. We're talking about water sewer connections. This is ultimately a house that is currently occupied. And just a full disclosure, it was annexed in, as he, I think, many are aware, he had some issues trying to find a piece of property inside town limits. So he purchased a property, NIMIA did a voluntary petition for annexation, and this is just the initial zoning to assign the classification to the town. It was actually already zoned R7.5 in the county, and we just re-designated the same classification in the town limits. And that's basically what this request is before us today.
Okay. Is it necessary for a public hearing?
Yes. So you do have to open it for a public hearing, and the staff recommendation is in your package.
Okay. So at this time, is there anyone here that would like to speak against this rezoning? Or really same zoning, but the zoning of this property?
Motion to open a public hearing.
I'm sorry. Motion to open a public hearing. We got it now. Anyone that'd like to speak against this? Anyone in favor of this that would like to speak in reference to this change? It's really the same zoning. It's just becoming part of Hope Mills instead of part of Cumberland County. Seeing and hearing none, do I have a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Motion to close public hearing? Alright, at this time, do we have any questions from our board?
I have a question, Madam Mayor. Were any of the neighbors asked if they want to get their property annexed into?
Typically, the only time we would have the authority to annex in is if we're doing a forced annexation through the legislature. In terms of the neighbors adjacent, they were notified because the general statute requires that we notify them of any public hearing. But because this is an annexation, we didn't solicit comments from them to see if they wanted to annex in, but they were notified of this particular case. Now, if they are interested, and this is very crucial here, if we approach them to do an annexation, if they are devoid of a connection to water sewer, the town is responsible for extending that water sewer. If they come in to us, then that pretty much eliminates our requirement to extend water sewer. So I haven't gotten that pulse from that neighbor, neighborhood that gauges an interest. If because of this annexation, there is a renewed interest, I would definitely let you guys know. But as of now, the only formal communication between us is just notifying them of the public hearing for this annexation. And we haven't received any feedback that indicates to us that there's a desire for them to come in.
Okay. Thank you. So you have them.
Yeah. Madam Mayor, I inquired and asked several questions about this annexation, and based on the recommendation of the town staff, I think I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay.
Case number ZNG-001-22. Initial zoning of 0.75 plus acre to R7.5, more restrictive zoning, property located on 4465 Calico Street. Make a motion that we annex.
Technically, if you turn to page three of the staff report, that's what I need you to read to the record where it says "staff recommendation", and it talks about the land use plan.
What page is that on?
Look at the actual staff report. It's on the third page at the bottom.
Third page on the bottom. Okay. You ought to put that up top. Yeah. Which, not the whole thing, do you? Good lord.
You wouldn't want everybody else to jump, don't it, Ryan?
That's a whole book. Just kidding. In ZNG-001-22, the town of Hope Mills, planning staff recommend approval of the initial zoning request from County R7.5 to Town R7.5, and find that the approval is consistent with the adopted, current Southwest Cumberland Land Use Plan of low-density residential, and that recommend an approval of the request is reasonable and in the public interest because the site is developed with an existing single-family resident that does not propose any new construction and would disrupt the harmony of the established residential development in the surrounding area.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'm sorry.
Have a motion, a second, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. Thank you, sir. Next, we have public comments, and today we have with us Joanne Grimes. If you'll come to the microphone and you need...
Irene Grimes.
Huh? Irene, I'm sorry.
I'm not speaking out to her.
Okay. I see. I could be my J, but I'll make it an I. Irene Grimes.
Handwriting is not...
That's okay. And if you'll just give your address, so that we can have it for public comments.
First, I need to apologize for my voice. I lost my voice. My name is Irene Grimes. I live at 3918 Colorado Drive, North Hills. So as some of you know, I serve on two boards here in the county. And on one of those boards, we're debating our invocation policy and trying to create an invocation policy. So at our meeting last week, the mayor came and spoke during our public comment period and explained how inclusive and how welcoming Hope Mills is. So I sort of think that we all can learn something from each other, and we can always do something better. So after the mayor's visit, I went back and I thought I'd take a look, because if things are working well here, then maybe we can use that. So I went back and looked at the minutes of the regular meetings that you all have, starting in 2013, which is all the meetings that are online, and discovered that there has been roughly 200 and something regular meetings. And for 100% of those meetings, the invocations have been done by a clergy person of the Christian faith. So no other faiths have been represented. And 82% of those have been done by the same six pastors, which is kind of a high number. I think that in order to be truly inclusive and to be truly welcoming, we as community leaders should include everybody. We should include other faiths. We have a Muslim community here. We have Buddhists. We have Rastafarians, and Wiccan, and Agnostics. And I think in order to be truly inclusive, we need to include everybody. So thank you for your coming.
Thank you for coming. Next, we have our consent agenda. Is there anything that you would like moved from our consent agenda to new business? Or do I have a motion to approve our consent agenda that's before you?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second? Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. We have no old business, new business. A discussion of kayak and bike rental at the lake park, and this was requested by Commissioner Legg. We do have a document that has been provided in reference to the policy or the procedure for kayak renting or how you go about doing something like that at our lake. I don't know if our town manager would like to just briefly go over that with us and so that we can explain to the public, because I think the concern is that you've got someone down there that's actually renting some kind of neat things, the hydro, the hydro things that you pedal, so it's different from last year.
Sure. So this commission actually created a policy whereby we do permits, land usage. And that process was initiated for other things as well. We have lots of contracts with, you know, like some of the judo instructors. Trying to think if they have exercise courses with the moms and the pops, and just a whole lot of different things that take place. So this one that you're in question of, Mr. Morrison's on vacation this week. So he's the one that actually processed and handled most of it for us. However, North Carolina Water Bikes and Kayaks, they came to plan review, which Mr. McLaughlin heads up our team, and all of our team looks at... Mr. Knoxville just left. Things like development initiation process, things of, hey, I want to open a business. I want to develop this land. So our team gives them suggestions and tips. They laid out the process of the legal requirements as far as the dedication of vacation. We do have adding this additional insurance, so that people operating on our lake and our property, if they have a mishap or something happens, the insurance coverage also covers the city. There is a fee. There is a process. They have to fill out, explain what they're doing. They get some general guidelines and some contractual language that's in that packet for you. So they did come to our plan review. They got some tips and suggestions of what the staff is willing to do, and things that we felt like it would be beneficial, that it wouldn't be intrusive. You know, it's kind of a congested area there with both law traffic and the property. And there have been some historical situations in the staff and things at that location. So they got that in. They got it submitted. They did get it through. And they started operating. Their contract date is April 1st. I believe it goes to September 3rd. September 30th is the termination date. So they have issued licensure, and I did get some texts from council asking, oh, what are they doing? And I just gave a brief, you know, we do have new company. They do have their department's minute. Because I think there was some confusion of who's operating and, you know. I think it's hard, because we do have a lot of contractual things that we do on a weekly basis that, you know, the smaller things, the some of the sports and some of the activities, try to gain as much attraction and attention as that. But I did work with our PD and our staff, and Mr. Morrison, you know, briefs and people what they expect down there. So far, it's been pretty beneficial. Like, you know, there is a tax component. The city doesn't have it, or when we get paid by them, it's just the process and the fee. There are any applicable state taxes, local taxes, that are beneficial. But outside of that, we don't have any kind of a contractual. They pay us in kind of a... It is a public lake, so, you know, they don't have an exclusive right. And Mr. Morrison's like, hey, they're the first in, first to do this. They did email the departments and we issued it. It doesn't require by any commission or board of commissioners to prove this. You know, I don't know what people have been asking you or what things have come up, but it's always good to give updates if there's questions. And please do always call us or ask if we're getting up like this. I know Mr. Legg had some specific questions, but I didn't jot those down, and I don't want to venture into that anymore than what I've provided you. But if you want to follow up, Mr. Morrison will be back on Monday. Anybody on our team would be happy to help to navigate questions.
I think what he shared with me, one concern was if they had a contract, which they do, if they had insurance, which they do, and if they had a tax ID number, which they do. So all of those things were met, and I think the main thing was that the... I don't think anyone bothered to ask the man if he had a permit to sail. And if they did ask him, I don't know, you know, what his response was. But I think that was the main thing, was that Commissioner Legg, there was somebody down there in what I think caught the attention was these hydro bikes, because that was something completely different than the kayaks or the canoes, so that that's... So I think this is probably the response he was looking for. And the main thing was make it public that this was official and that they had gone through a process in order to be down there.
Right. Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I actually want, you know, I heard different rumors about this right here. So I called Mr. Lamarcle, and I inquired to say fairness of the process. Ts dotted. Mr. Ts crossed, Is dotted. The fairness of the process. He said, everything's been done the correct and right way. And to me, that's what it's all about, because it's a business. And the permit requirement is a requirement. And bottom line, I said, well, did they meet the requirements of the town? He said, yes, they did. And I was satisfied with the answer, because every question I asked him in detail, he provided me with the answer. And I think that, and that's what the citizens want to know. Was there fairness in the process, you know, based on answers I received? Yes, it was. RFP was done. There's two processes implemented by the town, and they followed that process, and I was satisfied with the outcome and the explanations he gave me. And there's one other thing that I like for the citizens to understand as well, that it's not our job, even when I was a citizen, to go to anyone and ask them to have a business license or a permit. If they have a question about it, they should reach out to the town staff and let the town staff answer those questions for them. That way, we can avoid a lot of confusion. We can avoid a lot of rumors and a lot of unnecessary research that goes into researching stuff like that. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Any other comments? Everybody good? Alrighty then. Takes care of that. Next item is consideration, acceptance, annexation, application, and approval of resolution R 2022-10, instructing the town clerk to investigate the sufficiency of the application. Any questions in reference to this?
Tab 7. I know I looked over for some answers down there. I would think so.
Madam Mayor, make a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like a motion to approve the annexation, considering accepting the annexation application, R 2022-10, instructing the town clerk to investigate the sufficiency of the application.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. Okay. Next item on agenda is consideration, possible approval of the bylaws and articles of incorp- Next item on agenda is consideration possible approval of the bylaws and articles of incorporation for the creation of a nonprofit for the Hope Mills Prime Movers. And I'll turn this over to Mr. McLaughlin.
How you guys doing? Um, in your package, there's a copy of the bylaws and articles of incorporation. Um, the bylaws piece is just the committee trying to get a little bit more formal as an organization. The bylaws actually outlaw, uh, outline when they're meeting, uh, board structures and things of that nature. The nonprofit is being requested because, um, if you follow the prime moves of the last couple of years, they do a lot of very significant, um, things in the town. Only one of our committees that operates at a very high level, to the point where they've run into some issues trying to get funding where they have an endeavor that, um, is very, very heavily supported. But when they reach out to a company, the company can't donate large sums to them because they, the company has tax, uh, write-off, um, responsibility. So if it was a nonprofit in place, that would be able to, uh, receive additional funding. And I think it's a great idea because a lot of times when we talk about committees, we're talking about requests and things that are a little bit above and beyond. I think, uh, the board did put a cap on, um, committees as well. But I think this is a committee that actually is operating at a very, very high level. And, um, the ability to be able to start a nonprofit will put them in a higher position to be able to ask for less money from the town. Town attorney has had a chance to look at both of the, uh, items. Um, as the liaison, I'm listed as the, uh, agent, um, in the, uh, Articles of Incorporation. But it has to be approved by the board before it can actually be filed. Um, and that's basically the backstory. I think the historic commission did one of these, but they did, did it separate from the town. This is one where it's directly tied to the town. I think there was some, um, concerns about, uh, any liability to the town. I think we can put some language in that would, uh, identify as to that. But the basis of what they're requesting is just to be able to operate at a higher level with outlined bylaws and a, and a nonprofit status that allows them to, to receive additional funds, um, at a higher level than what they already receive.
Will this money be deposited into the town?
Very good question. Right now, their budget is a line item in my, um, department's budget. So I do think, um, I think, uh, Commissioner Mitchell and I were talking about this. If there is a concern, I think any funds they receive just goes into their prime movers account. And I think it should basically be earmarked because if a company is providing funds to this nonprofit, the nonprofit should be able to have direct access to it. Um, and I think if we have the structure already within my department's budget for a prime movers line item, I think that's the mechanism that would allow that funding source, all those funds to go into an account where we're still, still managing it from the town side, uh, but it still allows them to have direct access to it.
Okay, any questions?
Madam Mayor?
Yeah.
But, you know, I did some research after we talked and, uh, the state has, uh, structured outlined, uh, under the S O G, uh, how to go about setting up in the town, you know, working together on the nonprofit. Matter of fact, more and more municipalities are actually working with nonprofits now to achieve and do some of the things that the prime mover is doing. So I think that, uh, I commend the prime movers for taking that step forward. And I think this would be the first time, I think, the town has done something like this, wouldn't it be?
I think so, it's, it's, it's commendable because a lot of times, um, you know, you want committees to be able to operate to the point where the reductions, um, there are reductions in the request from the town general fund, but they're self-contained. Uh, the bylaws, to me, is a noble, uh, way of them saying, these are how we're going to be regulated within our own selves. So I think this is a step in the right direction in terms of what they're ultimately trying to do. They have some amazing ideas, um, for the next couple, uh, coming year as well.
They have some pretty good guidelines in place that'll keep you out of trouble, trust me.
And if you look at Articles of Corporations, the actual mission statement of what the prime move, who they are in terms of devising the town is in the Articles of Incorporation. So, um, I think this is something positive they're doing, um, town staff is in support of.
I think the, the key to this also would be that this would be a town committee that is authorized by the town.
Yes.
Rather than you have a rash of, of nonprofits then wanting to come before the town.
That's right.
Because this is one of those times where this is a, this is kind of a fine line, uh, usually. And I know that when we've had, uh, groups that have raised large sums of money before, and I can back that up to the first Old Mill days, they did collect lots of money and it was put in a line item in the town. Um, it was for a specific purpose.
Yes.
Um, and that way they didn't have any, any corporation. But I do believe as long as it's under the town, um, and the town is regulating the committee, because the members are going to change, I think that was the concern with the, the other committee that pulled, it, it, in essence, the other committee wasn't a part of the town. It became its own separate committee.
That's what the concern was.
So this, this staying part of the town, I think, makes this, um, not only more legitimate, but it also makes it so that people understand that they are working with the town for the town. So I think that's a good idea.
And the bylaws are the Articles of Corporations that speaks to the activities of the members in terms of you can't go out, uh, speaking ill of the town and things of that nature. So there is, uh, a language that interweaves the connection back to the town. And so we still do have.
As I was reading it, I thought they'd done a good job in the preparation of it also for it. It, it really, um, answered most questions that I might have had.
And to their credit, they're doing all the work.
Yeah.
Just driving the car. They're doing us a different amount of effort.
Yeah, and I, and I would also like to say is we, we, we did not want to do that. We didn't want, we didn't want to do anything separately because since we started this process, almost all of the members have changed. So we didn't want to have it where individuals were involved. Or if I was not to be here, it was independently with the town. One of the issues that they ran into was like Christmas donations, um, even getting like certain T-shirts and things donated. People do not want to do it unless you have like a nonprofit status.
Taxpayer ID.
Our attorney did help us out and had an attorney actually draft it up and look over everything for us.
Yeah, Bob's side, he was very, very good.
So I do appreciate that as well. So it has been, hopefully it was well vetted, so I appreciate the help with that.
So I need to make the motion.
Mm-hmm.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the bylaws and articles of incorporation for the creation of a nonprofit for the Hope Mills Prime Movers.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have our manager's report. Is there anything you want to add to it or any questions anyone has about the report? Okay, any questions? Anybody got any questions about the report? You take your time to go back over it real fast?
Yeah.
Uh, town manager, on like, on your report, like the chapel, um, restroom building in, uh, the Harish's Park? Is any way possible, we can probably put a projection or estimate a timeline on some of these things so we can kind of track along with it?
Sure, so, so let us specifically, Mr. Morrison's tracking, he did just review the contract, so that's moving forward. Um, just executed that at the previous meeting.
Uh-huh.
Most of those are, are almost to the point to be ready to, to go out to get. That one was actually a contract that you were starting to keep it up. But they, they did reach out to me about the bathroom, um, doing the flabby. So they're ready to start speaking and proceeding this forward.
Okay, any other questions for the town manager? Everybody good?
I do, I have one question. Um, I know when we talked about, um, we updated the, the bylaws first, or the policy for the different committees. Every chair was supposed to take it to their committees and go over it. And we talked about having something where all of the committees kind of got together or maybe the chairs of the committee so they could talk about different things that they're doing, maybe partnering together. So did all of the, I know that our committee went over it. So did all of the committee chairs go over the new, um, policies?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I know we, we did, I just wanted to make sure, because that's what we said we wanted to do. So I wanted to make sure we followed through.
At least they had an opportunity.
Right, right, right.
They all received.
They all received it? Yes.
Information, I don't know whether they shared it or not, that's kind of.
Right.
Liaisoned you all were at meetings.
Okay.
With this and Brian.
All right, well, thank you.
I don't, he didn't give me any, anything other than just his information about not being here this evening. So I don't know about his update.
So you sent it to him, right? For example, they had enough time.
That's all, all right. Anything else? All right, any, any other comments, any staff comments?
Still looking for applications for boards, committees and positions.
Which ones are still open?
Specifically, I think we have one Prime Movers, one Parks and Rec, uh, one Parents Commission, and two is for.
Maybe we can run on the marquee again, like you did for the start of the year?
I'll check with the Parks and Rec if they're open.
That shouldn't be a problem.
And a reminder that Saturday is our, uh, townwide cleanup. And I will say, and I don't know if everybody else got it, but I did get the flyer in the mail from, uh, Stormwater and from Parks. It explains about our upcoming, uh, it's got April twenty-third trash pickup and the May seventh event with all the other stuff taking place. So I, I did want to, um, say that that mailer I think is going to help. Um, but I do want to encourage anyone that will to come out and help Saturday because what we're trying to do is encourage our citizens, uh, to understand that it's, it's not necessarily their trash, but it is our trash, it all belongs to Hope Mills and we need to get it, our streets cleaned up. And I do want to commend the mayor's youth leadership. Um, I don't know if, um, I guess, Mr. Cisco can verify that there was an awful lot of bags down there at the Gilmott Cemetery, because I know there was probably, they looked, they were not probably happy to see all that. But, uh, the youth did work at the Gilmott Cemetery and they'll be back there again this Saturday. Uh, the goal is to, it's a lot of, just has neglected. It is a private cemetery, it's not something the town maintains, but it is something that, uh, many of our residents that are buried there, uh, there's no family left. So a lot of it is just a fact that needs, needs help in cleaning it up. Uh, but I do encourage people to come out and help us on Saturday, uh, because we do, uh, I think the more we can get involved, the easier it'll be for us to, to make a, an impact as far as how, how it works if we work together as a team. Anything else?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
That area that, uh, one of the citizens complained about down by the VFW in the woods where the homeless was living at, I had somebody go back there and clean it up, but I probably, I'm gonna try to get them to drag. If it's okay if I have them drag the bags to the edge of that parking lot by the VFW and can we get maybe the public worst to go, uh, pick it up? Because I had them pick it up already. It's just getting it all the way is the, is the, is the challenge. But it was, I saw, I don't know if y'all ever seen it. I don't know if the police chief drove back down that area where the homeless was at, they left it in a mess, in a mess. It was horrible. But I had it all police up cleaned up, but they just need to have it picked up.
Okay, anything else? Okay, it is actually seven forty-three and that is all we have on our agenda. There's no staff comments, there's no further business. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn? Whoa.